Welcome back to the place. Father God, we look to you today and we're mindful of our blessings you've showered upon us. We're mindful of those in the state of Florida that are suffering in heartache now. We pray to comfort them and want sure of them. Mindful county business today, we pray you grant us wisdom to make decisions that will be always in your sight. And those that protect us in service is pray you will pluck your within us and bless us now in prayer in Christ's name.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Mr. Meeting, a day late today at President's Day yesterday. Payroll number, oh, let's go do minutes first. Minutes were sent via email. Any alterations or corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion second.
Have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Payroll number four, two hundred nine thousand eight hundred forty-nine dollars and ten cents. We had claims in the amount of four hundred twenty-six thousand six hundred eighty dollars and three cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Three, zero. Go right to Monty.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
This morning, we had ninety-nine inmates, twenty-one are F-6, and six are DOC. The only other thing I have is we've started our spring twenty early. If you want to come out and look, we're painting the administrative area and doing some other changes, so kind of spruce it up.
Okay.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Monty.
Thank you.
You too.
Last couple of weeks, just out trimming brush. Just as everyone knows, it's that time of year. Little side note I just threw on here, as we're cutting brush, just for the public to know that we're not looking to upset anyone. A hundred percent of the trees that we cut and trim are in our right-of-way. We're not looking to go into people's yards and cut their trees down and get them all fired up, so I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of that. We haven't been out yet, just in the last two weeks, so it's kind of fresh for people and they forget how brush cutting goes, so I wanted to refresh their memory that we're not just doing it to just do it. We're still, we started getting in our signs, like I spoke last meeting about putting decals on old signs, so we're in the process of making those up. Once those are all made, we'll be out in the county replacing those. Number three, a quick point on call-ins. I really appreciate the Sheriff's Department and the public for calling things in. I've noticed, I obviously only being in this position for a year, I don't know how that log works in the past, but this year, this winter, and now with some rain, it's definitely, it helps us know because we can't be out everywhere, so I want to just say a little bit of appreciation for that. The rain is going to continue. There's a lot of standing water. The ground's not a hundred percent thawed, so it can't run into the ground. Ditches are full, so just bear with us. Don't drive through standing water. I know it's like a broken record. Every news channel says that, but I figured I'd better say the same thing as well. If the weather continues, we'll probably be out a little earlier this year than we have in the past and start putting some stone down in the townships and get some of that stuff taken care of. And then, I think that's about it. Everything's going pretty good. We're going to just start grading probably later this week. Lot of the gravel roads and everyone, anyone that drives gravel roads knows they're pot cooled up pretty bad from the winter, but I don't want to grade and put a lot of stone down now in case we get another snow and all that ends up in the side ditches and it's just kind of, it's a waste of time and money, so I'm trying to time that correctly to where if we wait till mid-March to really get out and hit it hard, that hopefully the bad weather's behind us. So, other than that, everything's going pretty good.
Good job.
Great.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Thanks.
Can you beat that? Can you beat him?
Probably not.
Timing. I got some good news today, so that's all.
You do?
Yeah. Well, I'll start with one item here, and that's Bridge 142. That's the Zanesville Bridge. We're waiting on one final utility relocation with Frontier. Apparently, they have a line in the area that we're trying to schedule and that should be relocated here in the next week with a tentative start date from the contractor of March 5th. So, that's not as early as we've obviously hoped for, but with utility relocations and their work schedule, that's about the best we could work out. I've got a tentative end date in June at this time, so we're going to work with the contractor and see if that can be expedited at all. But with the add alternate with the new deck surface, that did add a little bit of time, but we're going to have a better product at the end of the day. So, I'll publish the full, at least the schedule, once I've got that worked out with the contractor. So, that said, moving on to Bridge 106, that was our federal aid application we put out. I received a letter from Endot on Friday that we were awarded a portion of the funds we requested. Excuse me. We were awarded one point two five million dollars towards that project. Now, that project will be in 2022, 2023. I need to schedule kind of a pre-award meeting with Endot and see how certain details I need to do as far as the business side of the project goes, so hopefully in the next thirty days, I'll give you the fin dot and I'll have more of an update probably late in March for you on that. But very good news for us. It was the difference between having to close that bridge someday in the future or doing the rehab that we need, so that's a really good award for us.
That's Rockford, right?
Yep. So, just outside of Rockford. Yep. Excuse me. Sorry about the cough. Bridge 18, that project is moving along. The structure's been essentially assembled. Unfortunately, with the rain, that's probably going to throw them off a little bit, getting some of the work done, but I'm glad they got that mostly complete. We'll start putting the head walls together and backfill in that area, so hopefully here in the next two to three weeks, they'll be able to close that project out, so. And moving on, Hoosier Highway, County Route 500 South. I should have, that's an intersection, that radius we're trying to put into the road. I should have thirty percent design drawings this week, so we'll try to move that project along. We've already had some early discussions with property owners, so we're going to try to secure right-of-way. Once that's done, geotech and the design looks good, we'll be in a good position to try to pursue commute crossings and money and shooting the jaw up. And last item I have is a right-of-way dedication from Stronza on the County Route 500 East project. That's between nine hundred and a thousand north. That'd be one of the last two that we need for that section, so.
Fantastic. Motion to accept sign.
Right-of-way. Excuse me. Some of these are from the area. Some are from area plan. There's three others from area plans.
So, just one today?
Nope.
All of them?
I think it all, all three. Sorry. I turned that in.
So, that's a motion?
Second.
What? In favor?
Aye.
All right. Any questions for me? Not that I can keep from coughing through it all, so.
No. Nice job, man.
That's great. Thank you very much.
Keep up the good work.
Congratulations.
Glad to see that award. That's great for us.
Other reports.
Well, really quick. Yeah, I don't have anything else to add except for what you have under there. So, what you wanted to discuss on that, on anything else, then?
Okay. Well, I'm going to bring up the Regional Sewer District. I was fortunate that I was able to go with Mike Mossberg and Lee, who's surprisingly in the audience. Last night, you weren't sure, so I'll briefly give an update. Last Wednesday, we attended a tabletop with Travis Holdman, Matt Lehman, Brian from the Indiana Department of Finance, Jim McGough, Bruno Piggott. I'm not sure. He's the IDIM Commissioner, myself, Lee, and there was one other gentleman. I can't remember his name. He was from the Greenfield or Greenwood area, but we presented the drawing and the map of the layout of the Timber Ridge Golf Course area. We presented the estimates that the Commissioners paid for. Two options. One option was those homes on 250 would been pressured into the 250 line, and the other option was a total gravity project. There's about a $200,000 to $220,000 difference, and it immediately led to them looking at the gravity option in its entirety. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, they pushed gravity strongly.
Yes. So, that being said, we discussed the permission in regards to the City of Bluffton accepting the sewage. We did have an email from Tony Crowley, City Attorney. We did receive one, I believe it'd be yesterday, from the mayor. I think it came through with, I think you forwarded it to me, with Ted's signature on it that he was...
Jim McGough.
Jim McGough, yes. And so, the city would be on boarded except the sewer, sewage, but not in, accept any responsibility or financial obligation to the project. So, it leads us to, the conclusion was, we need to have a board, functioning board, and the council needs to fund the Regional Sewer District in essence. Now, that's a brief overview, and if you would like to expound, Lee, you're more than welcome to.
Well, yes, I mean, they strongly suggested that Los County have to function Regional Sewer District Board in place, and that takes, that takes dollars. It takes someone with some, some level of expertise in the field to lead the board and actually make things happen. You'd have to, you know, obviously interact with IDIM and ICAF and IFA. You have to develop invoicing systems, spearhead solutions for specific problem areas, develop maybe a countywide plan for knowledge of client systems. There's a lot of things that can take place on Regional Sewer District Board if it's functioning correctly. But without a funded board and somehow it was that responsibility, it's probably not going to happen if you volunteer type application. Because in some fashion or format, Los County needs to, needs to work on a funded project and make the Regional Sewer District actually function as it needs to and both IDIM and State Revolving Loan is strongly pushing that, that decision.
So, at this point, the last email you said is Ms. Perry, Vicki Perry, I believe it was, RCAP is meeting with Jim McGough and coming up, we're trying to come up with a funding type of solution, you know. You know, our number one concern for the constituents there is how much is it going to cost per month? Number one, we don't have a dollar amount other than what the City of Bluffton uses as un-metered sewage. That's the only thing on their record. It's possible that we would put a flowage type of system or meter to actually take it all and divide it out by per household as an option. We're not sure. And all these things take people time and money to put this all, all together, so probably, I would say the Regional Sewer District probably would have a meeting sometime, maybe an executive session, try to figure it out, maybe an open meeting. I don't know, but we probably could bring that up at the next commission reading at what we intend to present to County Council. Would that be a fair assumption?
Right. Look, they want more specific numbers, the Council did, and I think we should probably come with some somewhat, I mean, it's hard to say specific numbers because is this a part-time position? Is somebody else from the county got to take, you know...
Added responsibilities.
Responsibilities.
Right.
But it does, it does take somebody who has both the ability and the time to commit to doing projects. They even suggested we be working with Southern Wells. I mean, really, the RSD shouldn't be working with Southern Wells. They told us that they would be, they would expect, the IFA would get assistance to the City of Montpelier if the RSD was involved with Southern Wells to make that, that whole project happen too. So, they would become more involved as the RSD becomes more involved. So, they, they're strongly suggesting Los County give the board budget in the work.
So, that's a brief overview.
So, you actually need our blessing to move it forward to the council? Is that what I'm hearing? Or not? Or you don't even need to come to us?
Do we want to have an executive meeting? I, I think the Regional Sewer District should have a meeting between themselves.
Right, right.
And determine what they would like to present. I mean, I did have a recommendation come to me from Lee. I don't know if that's a starting point, if that should be discussed now, or if they should have a meeting in its entirety.
So, this would just primarily be, be totally through the council as far as funding? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
At least initially, I mean, if an RSD is fully moving and they're funding, it's, it becomes a complicated deal because then you're billing county residents and all kinds of stuff.
Right.
Right. I'm trying to figure out how, when it comes in. So, the council sets it up like, is a budget item, and then in terms of commissioners, we wouldn't really oversee that at that point because you would act to the council for budgeting and, and make your own decisions for the, the district board.
Right.
Right?
At least we need funding for just basic stuff.
Right, right.
I mean, as basic as RSD board coverage.
Right.
Which we haven't had for five years.
Right.
Right. We're in the process of starting making decisions, and we dropped that. Dick Randall did tell me it's going to be a little short of $3,000. It was $28, $2700 for coverage.
But really, it comes as a commissioners, there's no liability from a commissioner standpoint, budgeting. It comes from a council, correct?
Yes.
That's what I'm trying to get my arms around. Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, we would, we would hope that the council or the Commissioners would make a recommendation to the council to fund.
That's what I'm getting at, yeah.
And we did do that for Matt Birch to give our maps and our drawings and our preliminary things that we presented at our meeting last week.
Okay, that's, I'm good with that.
We'll leave it at this. Leon had a question?
Yeah. Before the county puts more burden on the county taxpayers by having a funded RSD, I think we ought to look at the option of perhaps tabbing into the knowledge and experience of the county Board of Health. I think they could be of some asset, and they're already on board. I just think that's something that we had neglected to do, and I'd like to consider that as an option before we ask the taxpayers to, to fund any, you know, professional RSD board or whatever, so.
We could invite them to your executive meeting.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. I mean, you'll, you'll know then.
Okay.
I, I think with an invitation to them, to tell you what they can do and what they can't do.
Right.
Right. I think the, the best thing you want to do, Leon, is you don't want to stop the progress that you guys have made. I mean, it's, I'm, I'm very respectful and happy for what you guys have done and the amount of time you put into it, because when it all started, how much it was just a quagmire of sorts. So, where it's at today, thank you very much for what you do, because I know it's, it's a non-paying position and a lot of time put forth. And, and the last thing you want to do at this point is try to slow progress with something that you've already got. You've got head flow going forward, let's keep it going. And I think to, to look back to your point, Leon, to look back to start moving a little thing, I don't want you guys to slow down with what you're doing, because sometimes when we look back a little bit, it'll drag it, and I don't want to see you guys pulling an anchor when you've already got a lot of things moving forward, just as a thought when you deal with them.
And we have nothing moving forward. If I'm just a pure volunteer, when you talk about invoicing structures, you know, all the things that become more, like the part-time position to administer interacting with the state government and such.
Well, it, it has to happen. We all know it. It, it happens in counties all around us. Some are...
I would love to see the Health Department have, have some kind of relationship with this project.
Well, I know yesterday, Whitley County Economic Development Director called me en route to Indianapolis, and they testified for House Bill 1233. And their question was the membership and the makeup of the board of Section Nine of that bill.
Right.
And, you know, who needs to be a ratepayer? Their question is, they don't have, they're starting, and they have no ratepayers. Well, the language says ratepayers. Well, to me, a ratepayer would be, quote, "an in, living in an affected area," because at what, at some point in time, they will be a ratepayer, so. So, that being said, let's maybe get our heads together and have an executive session here in the next two weeks or something. Very good.
And I think saying that you're going to fund the RSD is not the same thing as saying we've made a decision what the RSD needs to do, so I mean, that was still... Funding, funding the RSD is not the same thing as saying that we're going to move forward with one option versus the other. I mean, that's what you are discovering and discussing, and that's why the Health Department can be a useful resource to you during that meeting, so hopefully that'll help.
So, anything else?
On the RSD or anything?
Or anything. Have the solid contract that needs to be approved by the Commissioners for the solid waste district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
To read the detail.
Aye.
Change and rate on the...
This, everything, this is regarding the solid waste district, in which we approved at the prior meeting here at nine o'clock, sets the salary rate. Everything in its entirety remains the same with the exception of two items. The controller's salary is fifty, $5,333, and the supervisor's salary is $30,541, so.
Another motion in the House.
I have a motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
With them signing papers, Jessica, you have anything? I'll open it for comments if anybody has any questions or comments.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Injury-wise, is it feasible physics-wise to do a gravity from Timber Ridge into the city?
Into the River Terrace lift station. And then, from there, we'd have to pump it out of that lift station, back to the North Oaks lift station, and then use their pump, which they've just upgraded. It's in the process of being, I'm not sure if it's online yet, but it's getting very, very close. So, go through that pump station, back to the gravity line, Long State Road 1.
And it's IDIM that's...
For purchase?
We have not contacted them with an offer because we don't have any money to even offer them, so.
My understanding, it's IDIM that's pushing it towards the gravity. It's their decision to do the, their recommendation to do the gravity line versus a direct pressure? Is that what you're saying?
We, yeah, we would have no, we would have no option. We'd have to use the pump no matter what, or a, install our own pump and either go to River Terrace's, I'm sorry, Terrace Drive, which is right across from the River Bridge, into that lift station, or go to the North Oaks.
Right, but you said there were, there were two things that you looked at. The direct connections on 250 being pressurized.
Correct.
Versus the gravity, and who is it that's recommending the gravity? What, what...
Jim McGough and State Revolving Loan and Bruno at IDIM.
So, IDIM.
Gravity.
Yes, yes.
Strongly.
Strongly.
When it comes to Timber Ridge, I believe there are eight homes that have fairly new septic systems. Was it discussed in your meeting down there how to handle those homeowners? Are they, would they be required to plug into a gravity?
Brian brought that up because they would be entitled to a waiver for five years and then have their system again inspected. It would have to be inspected before they would even be granted the waiver. But if it was inspected and it was in a working condition and approved, they could possibly even get an additional five. It kind of depends. We were reading, reading the language on a system that was approved prior to 1990, was that right?
After.
After 1990. So, that all being said, yeah, that was brought up, that was mentioned. The whole thing is, it's going to be part of the equation. The more people you have sharing the entire cost, the overall cost is lower, so.
But despite, what we were talking about was the, the county adopted in 97, that's some time ago, the county adopted a sewage ordinance, but in the, in the statute with respect to solid, er, regional sewer districts, the regional sewer district can adopt a rule ordinance with respect to hookups. And, and it has like a 300-foot, and then you've got waivers and how many, how many if that waiver could be renewed, but even for those, it's a matter of when, not yet. You've granted a waiver to be able to at least get some kind of return out of your investment that you put in.
That's right. That's my concern, that so, within the last five to 10 years, if I'm invested several thousand dollars.
Right, but, but the key to those waivers are the date of the installation, and it's got to be functioning, so it's, like said, you know, it's going to have to be inspected to make sure that it is functioning, not that it was, but then you didn't do any maintenance or anything you're supposed to to keep it functioning. But, but, you know, we're talking about the county ordinance together with what the RSD might decide with respect to who has to hook up and doesn't have to hook up within 300 feet.
Todd? So, Roy, are you saying that the RSD would supersede any county ordinances previously?
No, I'm not saying that they wouldn't, but I'm saying that they, they've got some authority to enact, I mean, by statute, state statute gives them the right to adopt these rules with respect to who hookups and who doesn't. So, I guess, Todd, yeah, I think they do supersede in the sense that the county's created a regional sewer district, and, and so, the authority that the state law gives RSDs sits on top of just the county's authority to pass ordinances, if that makes sense.
But in order to make rules and regulations, you have to be an elected body, not necessarily an appointed body according to the Indiana Constitution, correct?
I haven't, I haven't looked at that, just if the statute gives them that.
In compliance.
I don't know, it's been challenged.
That sounds a little backward.
Well, I know a lot of...
Well, I know a lot of regional sewer districts, uh, have quite, quite a large amount of control.
Yeah. They're not elected either.
No.
Yeah.
And that's, that shouldn't be legal.
Yeah. But it, it works that way.
Well, they're appointed by...
Unfortunately. I agree with you. I've been a part of it before and when they want to raise the rates, they raise the rates. That's how it works. And you're at their mercy and you just hope that you have those appointed people in the positions to look out for the rest of the citizens that are a part of it.
And that goes back to the origination of, of this regional sewer district.
Right.
The problems they created right off the bat.
Exactly.
And so that's, that's the exact place I don't want to go.
And that's exactly the conversation I had yesterday with Mr. Meyer, the Whitley County person, you know? It's, it's, this is where we were and this is what we spent and we got this in return. And that why, you know, we need people living in the affected area so they have a say in their destiny.
Right.
Pretty much.
Yes.
When you get into the, uh, area of... State legislators pass laws and their laws sometimes give to an agency, rule-making authority. And I'm not saying that's what the RSD is, but I'm, I'm saying...
There definitely is a lot of authority given RSD and they can do all kinds of stuff.
You, you can look at, here's the Indiana Code and then here's the Indiana Administrative Code.
Right.
So...
I guess that's my underlying purpose for us, hoping that the Board of Health can help us because I, I have a fear that in the future, you're going to have RSD members who are, uh, power-hungry or whatever and just want to throw their weight around and take advantage of their position. And I, I don't want the county to get into that situation.
Well, if I can speak to that, I'm going to put 28 years on the line here and tell you, Leon, that unfortunately, we all feel like you do. Okay? I agree a hundred percent that I don't want some radical getting into this position. The downside of it is you're never going to get away from that. The state has put us in a position to do that. And the only way that it's going to change is through the state. But, but it won't change. I'm just here to tell you. Okay? Let's face reality. Okay? I've been a part of one for 12 years. The people that were in the position, they raised my rates one time. It went up $5. Okay? But I had clean water. I was happy. We don't know what tomorrow brings. We hope that we put people in positions that look out for our best interest. Go with that and work forward like you guys are doing. Keep moving it. Let's not dwell on where we, we don't go. It, it won't happen. We'll be killing it again. We'll be in 1999 again and we'll be sitting here. Let's just move it. You guys are on it.
But at this point, the state is not mandating that, as I hear you. They are suggesting that. Is that correct?
It depends what they come back to us with RCAP and the State Revolving Loan. We don't know.
The, the RSD can't, you can have an elected board. I mean, I've, I've, I know I've seen that in the, in the section of the Indiana Code on RSD. You can have an elected board. I mean, when this was set up before...
Right.
Also...
The problem is you will not get anybody willing to serve unless they are power-hungry.
Also...
Right. That's what I'm saying.
Sometimes the, the, uh, membership board requirements include an elected official. So, and, and instead of...
Everybody needs one.
Instead of all county councilmen and all commissioners having to do everything, hopefully their, their oversight is in their exercise of, of good discretion and judgment in who they appoint to an appointed board.
But also considering every septic tank is in violation of the Indiana Code, even very, this very day. Every single one is in violation. So how do you, how do you deal with that, uh, by moving ahead? What, what are you going to do to move ahead, you know, on a county basis for that kind of a situation? I think you have one that be informed and people need to know that, that they're in violation. And, you know, it's, it's, it's literally a difficult process, but...
Well, hence the health improvements involved.
Yeah.
I mean, they're, they're, they're not trying to go out of their way, but when someone calls their attention to a violation, they're, they're duty-bound and conscientious enough that they'll act on it.
Right.
Yep. So we got some maybe difficult steps ahead of us, but let's keep the momentum going, so. Any other comments, questions? Okay. Entertainer motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.